New number three to have some introductions.
All right, sounds good. I'll move that we adopt the agenda with the additional item for introductions. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We will proceed accordingly. Next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes, and I understand that these are actually in the works at the moment.
Correct.
Yeah, so I'd like to propose that we table that item and we'll review and approve at a future meeting. I don't know if we need action for that.
No.
But we'll table that for now, and we'll come back at the next meeting. Next on the agenda is introductions. Maybe we want to start with the two of you. Talk a little bit about some of our staff transition, and since some of us may not have met you, we'll introduce ourselves as well.
All right, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Laura Chamberlain. I am consultant, providing interim planning services as a city planner for the city of Victoria. I currently work for HKGI, Hoysington Cogler Group Incorporated, out of Minneapolis. We are also doing the comprehensive plan. I'm not actually on the comprehensive plan team, but work closely with those associated, so I think you've met some of them before. I'm helping the city with some day-to-day zoning, building permit reviews, as well as land use analysis, and then assisting every once in a while with the planning commission.
Well, I think most of you know me. I'm Cara Garin. I'm the city engineer. I'm not typically at planning commission meetings unless the planning department requests that I be there, and given the fact that they're interim people, they requested that I be here tonight. I think I would note that the staff report was prepared by Mark Koltzis. He's the city's interim community development consultant, who's also helping the city out during this transition time until our positions are filled. And maybe Doug wants to introduce himself as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Doug Reader. I'm the interim city manager in Victoria. Looks like I'll be here until sometime in February, the last decision. But delighted to be here. I've been in business for about 45 years. Retired as city manager of Brooklyn Park and served as the interim city manager for Orno, Medina, Osseo, Wazetta, I think that's it. But so I'm sort of making the rounds and delighted to be here, and if I could be of any help, let me know.
Thank you, welcome.
And so as a note with all of us on board, between Cara, myself, Mark, and Doug, we're all coming out this with fresh eyes and aren't as familiar with, well, not Cara, but from the planning perspective, she is helping us where she can. And so, you know, we just ask your patience and understanding and know that if we can't get you an answer that you need today, we'll get it to you tomorrow, so that's all.
Sounds good. Well, welcome to you both, and welcome, Laura. Well, as with any interim commission, we'll work through the bumps together and lean on each other's expertise, so I'm sure we'll get through it. So we'll move on to our main event for the evening, which is now item number four, new business. And so Laura, I'll hand it to you to review the staff report for the preliminary plat and rezoning for Lake Town 11th Edition as submitted by US Home Corporation Doing Business as Lennar. Laura?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this evening, we are looking at the rezoning and preliminary plat of Lake Town 11th Edition. This is obviously the 11th subdivision review for the Lake Town development. We, back in...
Twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen, there was a sketch plan, or excuse me, sketch plat concept review that this area went along with Lake Town Ninth. And so we are now at the rezoning and preliminary plat phase. Both of those items require a public hearing, which will be held this evening, and then after that, final plat and site plan approval are the next steps. So the project location, Lake Town 11th, is sort of an odd-shaped parcel on the south side of town between Lake Town, is that Ninth along here? And Marsh Lake Road. And this was the original concept of Lake Town as a development from, I believe, 2004. And as you can see, there, things have shifted a little bit as the Lake Town development has developed. The concept plan has changed. Lake Town 11th is what is highlighted as Phase Two in this graphic with, and we have some realignments of different areas. What is being proposed today is, it's a little bit difficult to see on the graphic here, but a preliminary plat of 97 single-family lots. And, let's see if I can, here we go, a number of outlots. This is to be rezoned as an R2, which is the single-family district. The bulk regulations are here. Minimum lot size, seven hundred, or 7,500 square feet. Lot width and depth and setback limits shown here. All of the proposed lots meet these bulk regulations. In discussion with the applicant, we have, they have developed a phasing plan for Lake Town 11th Edition. At the top of your screen, I don't know if this can point. Nope, okay. In the outline with red here is Phase One. This would be the most immediate phase. Phase Two being these units in the middle here, and Phase Three for the south, excuse me. Phase One would access the site through Lake Town Ninth and the other existing, Lake Town Eighth Edition for construction. Other access points currently shown on the plan include a access to Marsh Lake Road along...
Poplar Place.
Poplar Place, thank you. And then, as well as roads that would be extended along Red Fox, as well as...
Timber Terrace.
Thank you. Should have labeled all of these. The housing types for the, that are being proposed for this development by Lennar are, in general, two-story, four bedrooms with varying square footage within. Within your packet, Mark had discussed a number of items for consideration for the planning commission. Just going to briefly walk through some of those before opening up to public hearing. With the preliminary plat, the developer submitted a landscaping plan that had a number of, or to address the trees, no, that's not on there. It did not include that as a image here. According to our city code, there are three different areas within the city code that have tree requirements. One is tree preservation and replacement. Another is, which is in Chapter 105 of the city code, subdivision street trees, which is in Chapter 107. Zoning has two elements, trees per lot, as well as trees as a buffer to minor and major arterials, or, excuse me, landscaping as a buffer. And so there are some complications with how all of those calculations are determined. We have finally worked through where we need to be as far as what the requirements are, and we are, Mark and I are working with Lennar on finalizing a tree plan. The final landscaping element, we do have the landscaping element within the preliminary plat. However, that element can be finalized at time of final plat. So it, what we have today is sufficient to move forward with the preliminary plat. And Cara's going to talk us through some complications with Marsh Lake Road.
Hello. So what the large number of audience members over on this side of the room learned from me today is that, we finally learned yesterday officially that we will not need to preserve right-of-way for a four-lane Marsh Lake Road, nor do we have to construct improvements that would be expandable to four lanes. So the county has gotten far enough in their traffic work that they've concluded that that's not necessary, based on the traffic projections, not only through 2040, but looking at full build-out of the county. That was the big kind of piece we'd been waiting for. Why we hadn't been able to move forward was the county wanted to have a scenario run at the time of full build-out, so, you know, 40 years from now, do we need four lanes? And they've concluded that we don't. So that's the first action we've seen in maybe a year on that front. But because of, because of the fact that we really put that project on hold for a whole lot of months, we haven't made it any further with final design of that roadway. So we had laid out a two-lane divided roadway with a big giant median based on 130 feet of right-of-way that could be expanded to four lanes at some point in the future. So all the information Lennar has had is a right-of-way line from what we had had them dedicate back during the Ninth Edition. We had them dedicate 75 feet of right-of-way for what at that point in time was a 150-foot right-of-way need. During preliminary design of Marsh Lake Road, that dropped down to 130 feet, and now it's going to be some number lower. So Lennar's been trying to plan up against a bit of a moving target and a bit of a ghost, and it's creating a little bit of uncertainty as it relates to the actual construction of improvements as the road, as the development starts to touch Marsh Lake Road. So a number of those issues were noted in Mark's staff report, so I'm just going to speak about them a little bit. The first one relates to buffer. So this is the area adjacent to Marsh Lake Road. Lennar had provided 75 feet of right-of-way, and that really started to pinch the, I'm going to hop back here. It starts to pinch the land area that they have available between Marsh Lake Road and this large wetland complex to fit a road and lots in. So in their preliminary plat application, they aren't showing a big buffer area. They're showing some, a retaining wall, some trees, and a storm sewer. The code specifically, as it's drafted today, which wasn't in place at the time that Lennar submitted their concept back in 2015, this ordinance wasn't here in its current form. I think there may have been a different form of requirement, but not the current one. The current code requires a 30-foot buffer between residential and minor arterial roads, and currently they're only showing a landscape buffer. So as the project would move towards final design, the intent would be that Marsh Lake Road would be designed to the point where we actually knew how these grades were going to interact. And with the reduction in right-of-way needs, now that we don't need to preserve right-of-way for a four-lane, it potentially frees up some additional land where that berming and landscape buffer could potentially be located once we work through those issues. The other problem that was being created is that there's a large hill. I'm going to go here. So there's a fairly substantial hill in this location on Marsh Lake Road. So the new road connection is proposed to connect right about in this location, generally at the top of the hill. So they're having to bring the road up to make the connection, which is driving the sanitary sewer deeper than is allowed by our design standards. So as we continue to work through those grades, once we have final details, there's certainly an opportunity to reduce the depth of that sewer so that we don't have this conflict between super-deep sewer just to serve the lots that are down at this end of the roadway.
Cara, while you're looking at that image, I'd interrupt. Well, how does it affect the neighbors to the east of there, if they're raising the road there? How do they get access to their properties?
So here?
Yes, please.
So they're accessing off of Marsh Lake Road. And so what we ideally would like to do would be to try to lower this hill on Marsh Lake Road down a little bit. That might be tricky, given the existing driveways in the area, but the roadway's actually shifting quite a bit to the north. So to be determined through the design process.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So then the other issue, besides sewer depth, that was raised was this connection of Poplar Point to Marsh Lake, Marsh Lake Road at this precise location. The property owner who lives in this property submitted comments that I believe you should have a copy of in front of you, but she's here as well tonight. And we also had an opportunity to meet with the family today before this meeting. But since forever ago, they've been expressing concern about this Poplar Point location being immediately across from their driveway at the top of a big steep hill with farm equipment turning in and out of that location. So concerns from a safety perspective and then to just privacy perspective. So if I go back to here, in the comprehensive plan that you've seen drafts of, we're showing roadway connections on Marsh Lake Road, both east and west of Poplar Point. So Poplar Point, which would just be a, you know, minor residential connection here, we're showing a more significant collector road connecting to the west. This would be Red Fox, and then another roadway to the east. So from the property owner's perspective, they're wondering if this connection can't be eliminated due to these other connections. So one of the things that we've been talking internally with and mentioned to the property owners today and have mentioned to Lennar is, as we work through this Marsh Lake Road design process, the city would be interested in seeing this roadway connection constructed. This is also the corridor where we need to bring the trunk sewer and water through to serve the south growth area. This connection would be through property owned by the people also on the south side of the road. So this is Schmieg's property, this is Schmieg's property. So between preliminary plat and final plat of this phase, which we expect to not be immediate, we would like to work with the landowner to pursue the potential to acquire land, to construct this roadway connection, extend the sewer and water so we have it available to start serving south of our growth area. And if we have this connection in place, we would no longer need this connection here. We'd end up with a cul-de-sac that is temporary in nature because ultimately that will extend through the Kelzer property and then tie into Red Fox on the west end. So a whole lot of moving parts that really can't be resolved until final design of Marsh Lake Road moves ahead. But from a preliminary plat perspective, if all of these things weren't going on around it, this connection would still be appropriate, since it's the only way to provide a secondary connection on the south end of Lennar's property. So at this point, staff would recommend moving forward with the preliminary plat, showing the connection as it is, but recognizing that staff will continue to work with the landowners and the city council and the county on all of these Marsh Lake Road issues between now and the time at which a third phase would come through for final plat. And I jumped way around your presentation.
And just to piggyback off of what Cara said, the, with the phasing, that each phase would have their own final plat. So the next step after preliminary plat would be final plat for Phase One. And then at such a time, Phase Two comes along, that would have its own final plat. And similarly, Phase Three. So the, especially with the Marsh Lake Road issues, those, the grading, as well as the sewer and everything along those lines for Phase Three could be addressed at that final plat, which is into the future.
Quick question. That sounds a little bit unusual. Into, I'm not su, have we done that before, where we've approved a broader area under the preliminary plat, but then came back and approved final plat in distinct, different?
That's fairly typical. So the meadows at Lake Wasserman Ridge is the last development that we had that was of sizable nature. So that actually is be, was being final-platted in three phases.
But the preliminary plat for the entire?
Oh, and the final plat covered the whole thing too, didn't it? You just split the development agreement into phases. Okay, that's a bad example. I was referring to this project that they did go ahead and do final plat all in one phase, but ended up phasing it in the development agreement. So that's in my head why there's more than one phase. Lake Town Ninth, you did preliminary plat of both the Ninth and the Tenth Edition, but then did final plat just of the Ninth in one year and final plat of the Tenth in a year later, I think.
Thank you.
I, I do think, it's been a while since we've seen a preliminary plat that's covered so many lots. You know, lately, the preliminary plats that we've been seeing are smaller in nature.
Yeah.
No, thank you.
Did you still have more presentation?
No.
Okay, so I know you've got some thoughts, but before, just for the benefit of the group, what I forgot to mention is how we sort of manage our meeting with a, with a public hearing. So thank you, Laura, for the staff presentation. We'll give the commission a chance to discuss some things and ask questions of staff. When we feel ready, then I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and we'll just ask those of you who want to share any thoughts or comments to come to the podium, state your name and address, and we'd love to hear your perspective and thoughts. Once you all are done sharing your thoughts, we'll close the public hearing. Mission will have further discussion, and then we'll act accordingly based on discussion and things that we heard. So with that, I'll open up for comments or questions among, among commission.
I'd like to stay on the subject of the road right-of-way, a popular place. Seems like a sticky point, and we've known about it since 2015. There's been ample time to come up with a solution to these problems that are presented with this, whether it be the sewer or the location interfering with the neighbors' privacy. I think we kind of dropped the ball on that by not pursuing that and finding a solution for that. And if this final plats are done in three phases, who's to say the third phase will ever be done? And that road ends up staying there. The problem with that type of thinking is maybe not all these houses are going to sell. We've seen that happen, where half of a development is set empty, and a lot of the amenities, like a park, that wasn't built in a few of our developments in Rhapsody. I believe it took eight years to get a park for people that had lived there for seven and a half years. So that worries me a little bit with where that road is located and which phase of the job it is to finally eliminate it and get the other connections done to Marsh Lake Road. I'd rather see more progress done with the other connections right-of-way, pursuing the, the use of the land from the Schmiegs or buying the land. However, it has to work to get an easement for that road through that property and have that connection at that point, a safer point. Top of the hills are never good anyway, especially facing a farm who has to come in and out of the slow-moving vehicles. I think we have to find a way around that, get back to that subject right there, and figure out a solid solution for that right-of-way. Not something that's going to be fixed five years from now. Big concern for safety there for me and the, just the privacy factor. That farm's been there forever. There's no reason they should have to put up with that at this point of the development. Just my comments on that.
Todd, a little bit eager. Todd, direction he's going with it. There's also two lots identified on that stub. If we were to close that road at some point, do we have a safety issue closing the road? Do we have room for cul-de-sac there for turnaround? And would we normally approve those two lots on that potentially closed road at some point?
So I think we need to clarify something first, is that with the phasing, as shown here, the phasing of the roads would also follow these phases. So the road connection at Poplar Place wouldn't be built until Phase Three. So the road would, in Phase One, would have a temporary cul-de-sac here. Similarly, in Phase Two would, am I correct saying this? Okay. Because at the prelimi, or, excuse me, at the final plat is where the developer has the construction design standards for the roads that are approved by our plant, or, excuse me, our engineers. And so with that, what we're saying as showing on here, keeping it on the preliminary plat right now, with the intention that hopefully something can be figured out here. But until that is figured out, we have to show it on here. But nothing would be built here, ever, until the time for Phase Three if another solution couldn't happen.
If we're able to secure the land rights to construct this connection, I would envision that this will get revised slightly to address the turnaround, whether this ends up being an intersection or has, you know, if these lots get slightly reconfigured. Mark's opinion was that would be generally in conformance with the preliminary plat, so it would be a minor change at final plat, not a major change requiring a revision to the preliminary plat.
Being that this is being brought to us as a package, can we move Phase One and Phase Two forward and table Phase Three until we have more information?
I don't know that we can do that at the preliminary phase.
It's been submitted the way that it's submitted, but I'd look to the developer to see if he wants to comment.
Any other question I have, please, if I have one?
Go ahead, that's great.
What's coming to us is an R2, which has a minimum requirement of 60 foot. The images that we've seen for the housing product would never fit on a 60-foot lot. Why is this coming to us as an R2 versus an R1? And what are the average lot size, the median lot sizes of the development?
I would have to look back at the submission to know what the median lot size, unless the developer has that. I don't have that in front of me, so I apologize. The R2 designation that was in compliance with the previous planner and how this land was, is, for the future land use within the comprehensive plan, how this is guided. And so at concept, I assume that that was designated at the R2, or it's possible the R2 hadn't been officially recognized.
R2 didn't exist in 2015 when the concept came through, but before Ben left, he spent considerable time going back and forth with the developer. So the road configuration and lots that you see here are reflective of Ben's interaction with the developers. So none of us are in a position to speak to why, how they landed on R2 versus R1, but certainly the developer is here, and he was there, so.
Thank you, Cara.
You had talked a little bit about the, the buffer. And some nuance about the buffer is I believe the requirements are for, for both berm and landscaping, right? So when you were talking earlier about how the, the right-of-way may actually assist with that, is, is it reasonable to assume that there'll be support for both the berm and the landscaping? is, is it reasonable to assume that there'll be support for both the berm and the landscaping to comply with the requirements as they stand today?
I think it would be appropriate to have the developer speak to that. I, when I look at it, I think even with that additional right-of-way with the grades as they are right now, it may be a challenge to meet that code requirement. And so we may want to have him speak to that. Certainly, you know, in, in my time here, I've heard the city council and planning commission certainly speak to the merits of having berming and buffers along corridors such as Marsh Lake Road.
And I feel adhering to that code, that's why we have those ordinances and those codes is to adhere to them, not to get around them or not develop a piece of property to them. When we set those into our list of ordinances for building, our code of ordinances, that's for the builders to find a way, the developers find a way to comply with those that what the people had wanted and what the planning commission and the council themselves decided was proper for this development. So adhering to those is, is, should be base one. Otherwise, we're just doing another PUD if you were customizing the development of an R2. And that's not really what you do when you set an R2 standard with a list of ordinances to comply to. And having that buffer should be mandatory because that's our code of ordinance. And that's, that's what I personally feel I am here to help enforce or, or project to the council to follow these ordinances that we have set forth. And I, I think it's up to the developer to find a way to get that done. If it costs him a lot, costs him two lots, shrinks a lot, makes a smaller house, then that's what the development has complied to. We can't take a standard or an idea from 2015 and bring it forward in 2018 and say, here, you guys said this might be okay back then, it has to be okay now. We have to rethink, we have to modernize and we have to adhere to the codes that are in place at the time it's being built. And that goes from building to land development to code of ordinances. Wherever you want to lay that down, you adhere to what's in place at the time it happens. So I, I find that a point that, that's mute. It has to be, it has to come to, with compliance with the ordinance and that buffer issue. And I, and I'm still unclear about the road, so I'm trying to rethink my way of asking that question and I'll, I'll get to that, but I still don't like the answer yet because I'm not able to absorb it, but I'll try to reword it to you. As far as the buffer goes, we had a long discussion about that one night. Just about an hour and a half, an hour and 40 minutes, how we can help the surrounding neighbors and the traffic noise and everything for people, not just the people and the developer that's developing now. What about 15 years from now when another family moves in and has three, four kids running their backyard? They want to sit outside and have a picnic. They want a buffer there, they want that noise. And that's why we came up with that. They want that noise reduction, they want it to be a neighborhood, not a highway. And we only know we're going to get more traffic on that road, especially if we're going to three lanes, which I'm, I'm very glad to hear it's shrunken size. But that's what that buffer is there for and I, I think it's an important part of the, a feature of Victoria where we have our privacy.
Thank you, Todd. Okay, so there's a few things that I think we'll, we'll want to talk to the developer about. Maybe we'll do that when we open up the, open up the public hearing. But a couple more questions before we get to that. Park dedication. Can you touch a little bit on that? Because I, I think there's some, some lack of clarity in terms of what the current strategy is. There was mention of, of parks in, in the area. Can you touch on that a little more?
Yes, so internally, we are currently figuring out park dedication, which is typically something that is finalized with final plat. That, and the recording of the plat is when park dedication, the developer would either pay the fee or dedicate land accordingly. With the original Laketown development, the developer dedicated a significant portion of land for what is now the elementary school and the adjacent park, as well as, I believe, some land for a trail.
Primarily, the dedication did come through the, in the original development, through the elementary school and the adjacent park. There was some additional trail dedication with Laketown Ninth.
And so what we're working through right now is looking through those records. We're working with the developer to make sure that the park dedication for the entirety of Laketown, as originally set, hasn't been kind of used up, as it were. So that the park dedication that would be required for just this piece on its own was already contributed with that original Laketown development. We just want to make sure that we are, that that is the case. If it's not the case, then we need to know what the numbers are for what the developer would have to include as far as dedication.
And I, I would just note that the Park and Rec Director and myself, who sit on the sidelines of these conversations, both understand the developer's interpretation to be accurate, that they don't owe us additional parkland dedication with this, with these remaining phases of the development. Our recollection is that all the land that was required for all the land that Lennar owned was dedicated for the school and the park. But it is important that we locate Ben's records and the developer's records to make sure that we're dotting the I and crossing the T. We wouldn't be looking for additional parkland within this preliminary plat. It just comes down to whether they owe us any money.
Right, so that helps me because with regard to that aspect, we could move forward with confidence, knowing that it's more of an administrative issue to sort out the, the dollars and cents as opposed to the land.
Right, and the reason Ann had reviewed this with previous, previous times with the Park and Rec Committee, and if you recall, we ended up programming some additional park construction within the adjacent area next to Laketown Park. So we've now constructed additional park improvements there. So she was, she was fairly confident in her understanding that there wouldn't be additional opportunity to build more parks on this Lennar land. So the records do exist. Paul found his today and we'll be sending him over, but we, Ann was looking through her files to find that all out. When Laketown Ninth came through, we had a new planner at that time. So when Laketown Eighth came through, we went through the whole thing with Holly. Then Laketown Ninth came through, we went through the whole thing with Ben. And we just need to find that spreadsheet and file to make sure these planners are comfortable with those conclusions.
And we don't need that number until the final plat, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's good. Cara, maybe sticking with you for a bit. Item six in the staff report talks about the public safety with regard to the, the width of the streets within the development. And, you know, there's some comments about the 28-foot wide with parking permitted and some challenges the, the city has had historically. Looking for some direction from the planning commission, but I think that your insight on that history would actually be helpful.
Yeah, so the city standard street width is 28 feet wide by the city ordinance that permits parking on both sides of the street. From a fire protection perspective, they would like to see the streets either be increased in width or see parking restricted to one side of the street. To make that change, either one of them, we'd be looking at needing to make an ordinance amendment. This is a topic that probably comes up every two years in the 17 years that I've worked here. I think it's probably getting to the point in time that once the community development director and senior planner positions are filled, it's probably something that the planning commission should pick up and take a look at as it relates to the ordinances. I think there's some consensus at a staff level that moving towards just reducing parking to one side makes more sense than widening the roadways because of the environmental and cost implications of building wider roads. We could all spend an hour discussing the merits of those two different things, but it, it is something that I think we'd be looking for this group to engage in. But I think our consensus was that that maybe should happen when we don't have part-time people trying to keep the lights on, so.
So one of our challenges then in that regard is that, you know, what is, what is current code versus what the planning commission's role in approving this? I mean, it sounds like there's best practices understood by the city. Are, what's our expectation?
What's proposed here for this plat is consistent with every other street in Laketown. So they aren't proposing anything different than what the rest of the Laketown development or frankly, any of the developments built in the city in the last 20 years. So I, from, from an engineering perspective, I, it wouldn't make sense to me to try to implement a change on this last phase of a development coming through, but it is something from a broader perspective that should be revisited.
So I'm trying to understand from a, in terms of the planning commission's role, we can't change the code on the fly. I'm not sure that attaching a condition related to this is appropriate, but is it reasonable to expect that ongoing conversation, conversations between the city and the developer, the developer would factor in best practices? Or what's the best way to capture that?
Doug?
Chairman, I, I think what you're, what we're going to have to look at on staff level, incidentally, my hope is that we have a staff by sometime in June for a community development director and then a planner a month after that. But I think what we're looking at here is parking restrictions, whether you want to change the ordinance to only allow parking on one side everywhere. And I don't know that that affects your determination of the streets here. I, I don't think it would make sense to, to change the street width, but let us deal later with what we're going to do with the parking. Is that, you know?
Okay.
But I do think Mark wanted to reflect the staff discussion that occurred relating to that issue. It, it's, you know, generally, the street width isn't an issue when the houses are built and nobody has a party. It's, we have an example right now, up on Hawks Point, there's a $2 million house on the parade route. And so on Saturday, when the house is open for parade, the road's lined both sides of the street with cars and the fire chief wouldn't be able to get through it even with his command vehicle. So in those cases, as that example, we're working with the developer to temporarily, temporarily sign, the streets, no parking on one side. And you'll see a lot of that in the developments when they're under construction. The developer will restrict parking to one side to keep the flow of traffic, but it, it highlighted it as a longer, a bigger picture issue for us to contemplate, not subject to this development, I wouldn't think, but relative to the city as a whole.
I think you summed that up. Well, Cara, if I could jump in here, Jeff, because I mean, I live right in town up here. I've been here 30 years where the softball fields are up at Lions Park. And it's, parking's great until we have an event. So being proactive, if we had something in place that says during events, event chair or somebody, you know, whoever we decide is responsible, puts up the temporary, no parking one side. In the meantime, try to draft a policy going forward that says no parking on even sides in even years, odd sides in odd years, you know? Something that's solid and it is citywide, not prescribed. Because it's too hard for enforcement then. But I, I agree that now, this has been developed with that 28-foot in mind that we, like Commissioner Lochen said, we, we can't just change it on the fly.
Hey Cara, as a point of clarification, as the phases are being built out, did you mention that in between Phase One, Phase One and Phase Two, before Phase Two would be started, that the roads would be cul-de-sac there? So emergency vehicles wouldn't be able to turn around and the fire trucks wouldn't have to back all the way out multiple blocks?
Correct, so when, what'll happen next for final plat of Phase One, the developer will prepare detailed engineering drawings that get submitted for review. Those are reviewed by both the fire chief and the public works department. Typically, what you'll see is they'll construct a temporary turnaround that is built in an easement that extends onto the lots. And then that temporary turnaround would get removed at such time as extension. Each, each endpoint we treat based on the specifics of that particular endpoint. So how, how many lots are there? The fire chief will look at how he would access it from an emergency perspective and then public works will decide, we don't want a temporary turnaround here, we'll just push the snow with a truck, a small truck instead of a big truck. But we do review that very closely at final plat.
Thank you.
So going back to that, Cara, so when Phase One ends at the end of the road, you're going to have a cul-de-sac. Where is Phase Two going to come in? Where were they going to enter for construction then?
Phase Two would be constructed off of Red Fox Drive. So this would be the only access point into the blue, whoops, magic, into the blue section.
Yeah, so would this have to be a drive?
That wouldn't be a cul-de-sac there.
They'd remove the temporary cul-de-sac. And what we'd have to decide is, there aren't any lots running off here, so I, I think public works would just prefer to not plow that section. So we might not put a temporary cul-de-sac there. But certainly, there'd be one here. And same question here, if these roads aren't going through. But, you know, typically, they came up with an initial phasing plan just to give us an idea of how, how that might break out. But we work pretty closely on those details once they submit a final plat.
Yeah, I still have an issue with that Poplar Road sticking out on Marsh Lake that, that there, there's better alternatives with the other two routes you're showing on the, the diagram to pursue that heavily and...
Yeah, I think the challenge is, is their own, the other routes are owned by private property. So I think in the Schmeegs, it sounds like we might have a property owner who's willing to work with us on that. But if, if they weren't, we'd have to go through condemnation to put that connection. And I, and I, I don't know that the city council would be interested in pursuing condemnation when they could require the developer to make a connection within their own land rights.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's the route either because that's not the way Victory operates in general. But it just, I think there was just so much time to get that done in the last three years that, that we kind of missed out on not thinking ahead on something like that. And I think we should protect ourselves in the future and try to get those things we think could possibly be done, maybe get a little farther hashed out.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add is we're just a lot, we just have a lot more knowledge now with the comprehensive plan. We weren't even entirely sure where this road was not, where we necessarily wanted this roadway to come through. So I think with the comprehensive plan and the access management work that's done on Marsh Lake Road, I feel much more confident today in recommending that the city council move ahead, where I, I don't think I would have been comfortable with that. It would have felt a little ahead of the comprehensive plan process and the Marsh Lake Road process, so.
All right, and I'll trust you on that, your knowledge of it is a lot better than mine. So, okay.
Cara, is it safe to say the alignment of Marsh Lake Road will stay static where this connects to it? You know, the alignment's been questioned over the last year or so.
Um, I think the outside edges of the corridor, I think are, I think we're pretty comfortable with where those are. But because the right-of-way can get narrower now, we have another opportunity to decide how that maybe should shift north or south within that window. Our next step for Marsh Lake Road is, I'm just going to meet with the folks over here on an informal basis, just to remind everybody where things were at and start to get some feedback. As the road moves, even in this location, we ended up moving it to the north in response to the Schmeegs wanting the road to be as far away from their farmhouse as possible. But, but that has implication on the land they own on the north side. So now that we have some number of more feet to work with, do we want to keep it all the way north? Or do we want to slide it back to the south a little bit? I, you know, I think it's, it's not going to vastly change. We're talking about maybe a, you know, 20-foot swing back and forth, not a 50, 100-foot swing.
Excellent, thank you.
Another point of concern, if we're moving on to a different subject, I guess, was the tree removal. Lot of trees being removed. Some beautiful trees, some big trees, some trees you'll never get back in that area again if we start removing them. And how they affect the people that do have land there now. I, I don't really have that information. I wasn't able to go out and walk that. I, I don't really have that information. I wasn't able to go out and walk that property, obviously, and see what the impact was, and it's really hard to read the tree preservation teardown screen with the numbers and, but my concern would be for like the Simon property and the Schmieg property, especially the Simon property. If some of those trees to the north and northeast, northwest are removed, a lot of them in red are staying in the north and northwest, but you know, how does that affect their property as far as the wind, you know, vision, sight, sound, all that? I understand a lot of those trees just get there by nature in general, not that they were planted for a specific reason, and sometimes to develop you have to take trees down, but I see a lot of high-quality trees, the black walnuts and some of those getting torn out. I mean, that's, that, to me, that's a high-quality tree, and we're leaving a lot of, what's the, the beetle ones?
Ash trees?
Lot, lot of ash. Ox elders. I mean, those, those trees are a dime a dozen as far as cost and growth goes. Those are trees you can plant tomorrow, and in 15 years, you'll have a full-size tree as opposed to a, a good maple ogre realm. I don't know. It, it seems like they're taking out a lot more than we're getting back as far as quality goes. I don't know how anyone else feels about that, but...
I think, I think that's a, that's worth noting, definitely. That is something for myself and Mark coming into this process now that we, you know, see the large stand of trees in the center there that, and with the landscaping plans, tree removal plans, that is also a concern. Where, for our perspective, are, the city ordinances are not very proactive about tree preservation, unfortunately. And so, we are working with the developer to make sure that we're meeting the existing ordinances as far as replacement and preservation. Unfortunately, the way the ordinances are written, we don't really have a lot of teeth in order to follow that up. That is definitely something as Erin left, that she noted that we would want to address via an ordinance change in the future. I think this is a great example of why we want, that should be a priority for the planning commission as well as the city council.
I, I'd just add to that, all the tree stands that were saved historically in the city were, was accomplished through PUD. So, as we've moved away from PUD to going through straight zoning, it seems like then there's a gap. We have a pretty good tree preservation ordinance, but we don't have anything that limits the amount of trees they can clear.
Right.
So, that was one of the things Erin noted, and Ann noted some other cities' tree preservation ordinances that might be worth taking a look at that prevent, that limit the amount of trees you can remove. It, it feels like we maybe gave a little bit up as we moved away from the PUD.
Yeah, I think you're correct on that, because that was always our discussion, is that we're a land of topography, trees, woods, lakes, all the above, Victoria, but when we go into a development like this and all we're doing is slashing and burning, cutting down all these trees, it's counterproductive to the community I moved to 30 years ago. I moved here because of the trees and all that. Understanding development's coming, but with a keen idea that the city of Victoria, the council and, and planning commission members at that time, the idea was to preserve it to the best they could from what was here. And I, I agree with you that maybe we lost some of our grip when we did float away from the PUDs on that, and I'm sad to see it happen, actually.
Any other questions or comments before we open up? Okay. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Two administrative things, first being just recognizing that we did get some correspondence that was shared with us, either in our packet before the meeting or on our, at our seats tonight, and so we've got those and have reviewed them. Then I, it feels appropriate to start with the developer. If the developer wouldn't mind sharing some thoughts, I think during the, the discussion, there were, I heard at least three topics with regard to either the buffer, the intersection, and the phasing, if we could touch on some of that. And then others can can join us and share comments as well. If you wouldn't mind by stating your name and address?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Paul Tabon with Lennar. I'm a developer, a entitlement manager. Address is 16305 36th Avenue North, Suite 600, Plymouth, Minnesota. And I first want to begin before I, I did take a page of notes back there, and I will try my best to address the concerns that were brought up by the commission. But I first want to thank the city first and foremost for working with us as we move forward with the last couple additions of Lake Town. I want to thank Kara for helping us out with the presentation. Lori, Laura?
Laura.
Laura, sorry. I don't think I've met you face to face. Laura and Mark with kinda stepping in, and I think it's important to acknowledge that I've heard the, I've heard the, the term gap or transition or what have you used, and I think it's a legitimate concern and kind of an issue that we're in the middle of a transition, both in the zoning code of where Lake Town started and where it is today, and then also kind of in a transition or a gap in staff as well. So, we had done a lot of the planning, a lot of the, a lot of the, kind of the historical stuff that's happened over the years. As you probably know, this project was started back in like 2004, 2005, which was almost 10 years before I even came to Lennar. I've been with Lennar, it'll be five years in November, so between Kara and I, we make almost a complete person that's been around since that time. Actually, Kara would be, but in any case, so a couple of things that I'll just kinda go through and try to address your comments the best that I can. I just want to note that the phasing is subject to change. It just kinda made sense to split these last, you know, this last portion of it the way we did, and I can explain more about that, but in terms of a three-phased approach, the thought was to kinda move in from the north, because that's where we're developing in the ninth and 10th additions right now, so we, it would make sense to gradually come south, do that first portion highlighted in red there, gradually come south again, do the second portion in blue, and then gradually come south again and connect up with Marsh Lake Road. Part of the reason why that phasing is 1, 2, 3 is because as, as Kara had said tonight, we're not really sure what, until, you know, yesterday, or last week, or whenever it was, how Marsh Lake was gonna road, was going to work with the construction of that road in terms of those home sites back there. So, we had been using line work that was provided to us previously, but now it's outdated. However, we will continue to work through, you know, the, the alignment and how that affects those home sites on the south. And I think, Kara, could you put up the concept that was from 2015? I think at one point, we actually had the main connection going all the way down to where Poplar Place is now, but originally, that was gonna be, you can kinda see it's Red Fox.
Right. Sorry. I think it was on this one too, wasn't it?
Yeah. So, the other thing, and I, we've kinda talked about this, but we're trying to as closely as possible follow the layout that was set in place when the community first started. And we kind of, when we, when we decided to, to build out the remaining portion of the community back in 2015, and we went through the concept and the sketch plat stuff, a large part of why the community had been on hold is because there wasn't sewer service available to it. So, once that sewer became available, and with the housing recovery kinda starting, you know, two, three years ago where it was, it made sense to start bringing that back online as we recognized a market need for more housing sites in Victoria. So, we tried to stay as close as we possibly could with the concept that, and that ultimately, the, the master plan that was approved back in '04, '05. We did have the commission and the council review this. I'm not sure how many of you were here at the time, and I don't say that to be condescending. I don't, I don't know what the, you know, who was here at the time.
That's likely before any of our...
What's that?
Are you talking about 2015?
2015, yeah, when we started that.
Yeah, we, yes, several of us were here at the time.
Several of you, okay. So, we're trying to stick as closely as possible to the, to the concept, to what was reviewed, and kind of, you know. But one thing that I would note is the, the shift in the collector road and some of the reconfigurations of the roadway, that was kind of done before a couple of the other staff people moved on. And when we were kinda gearing up to submit this application, there were extensive conversations, lotting exercises, kicking around different configurations on things, and, and finally, we got a layout that kinda worked both for us and for city staff, and so we kinda went with it. So, that's kind of a really brief synopsis of, of why we are where we are and what we're trying to accomplish. To touch on the other issues, I heard it mentioned that there was a concern in lot width, I think, or lot size. So, housing, the, the houses that would be built in these additions that are being proposed right now are the same as what's under construction. So, that's a 50-foot wide house, and I believe the R2 zoning has an eight-foot side setback minimum, right?
Correct.
So, you're talking about a 56-foot wide lot minimum. That's to fit 50 feet and then 16 on, on, I'm sorry, eight feet on each side of it, right? But I believe most of our home sites are right around 70 feet.
So, the R2 primarily versus R1 is to minimize the side yard setback versus the eight, I think R1 is 10?
I believe that's...
Sound right?
Yeah.
The images that we've seen didn't match a 60-foot lot, which makes sense that what you just said, basically, you're just allowing to build yourself a little larger pad by going R2 versus R1.
I think to date, we had been building primarily 70-foot wide home sites, and so the thought went, and it's not, it's not atypical for us to build 65s. A lot of our, a lot of our home sites are 65 feet wide. That's kinda your base width that's kind of out there in the marketplace right now. But we decided that, you know, rather than try to squeeze them all in and go, all right, we want 50, or we want 50 feet and then eight feet on a side, so 56 feet or 66 feet, let's go to 70 and make it kinda, give ourselves a little bit more room, and try to stay with the character and intention of the neighborhood that's kind of been established as it is. So, hopefully, that kinda, that kinda helps on that.
It helps a lot. It's just hoping for general public, when they've seen the images that we've seen, maybe match that 60-foot wide structure.
When you say, oh, so when you say images, do you mean housing?
Yeah, what we have here actually kinda matches what you just described, but would not fit in a 60-foot wide lot.
Correct. They would have to be, I mean, those houses right there. Yeah, so those have to be a minimum 65.
Correct.
Because the houses, and that's, that's...
With the smaller, with the narrower side yard.
With a little bit, with a seven and a half set, side yard setback, but we actually planned for a little bit bigger. So, it is anticipated that those are the houses that would go in similar to the ninth and 10th addition.
Thank you. Just helps clarify the R2 versus R1, so thank you.
Great. I'll circle back on landscaping, because I think landscaping and tree removals are kind of tied together. And then as far as, let's see. There's been a lot of discussion on Marsh Lake Road, and what I can tell you at this time is we'll continue to work with city staff. Now that we have kind of an idea of what the line work is gonna be and what the width of, of the right-of-way might be, I think that'll help us to be able to kind of firm that down a little bit better. And I heard questions on kind of the, the pre-plating versus the final plating area and process. It's not uncommon for a pre-plat to get approved that incorporates a huge area. I mean, like, big. We, we've done pre-plats. I've done several of them where it's 300-plus home sites, and then what you end up doing is you phase it, break it up into final plans, and as long as the final plat is in conformance with, I'm sure you know this, with the approved pre-plat, you just move forward, but it's not uncommon to to pre-plat a really big area and then break it down into chunks, and that's kinda what we're doing here. And then that...
Oh, before you move on?
Sure.
Just to, before you get too far away from the, the Marsh Lake planning?
Yep.
Do you, as well as city staff, agree that with the timing that we're talking about, between the point of preliminary plat and final plat, that there's enough time to sort out the, the logistics of the, of the Marsh Lake Road challenges?
Do you have a guess of how long it'll be before you're wanting to build down in phase three?
Sure. I'll venture a guess, and then it's gonna go on the record, and then it's gonna change in like a week. That's just what happens. No, I, I would guesstimate at this point, we're probably two to three years down the line from completing the neighborhood. So, we would do probably phase one this year, phase two would be next year, and then phase three would be 2020-ish?
As long as we believe that the Marsh Lake Road negotiations don't affect phases one or two.
Right.
Then that's a pretty substantial timeline to get the details sorted out.
Right. So, the current, I, I'm gonna continue to say that we'd like to see Marsh Lake Road built in 2019. That's the year that we have it. The county has it in our budget. We have it in our budget. That's, that's gonna be a challenge, given where we are in the year already, because there's substantial land acquisition associated with that, and that timeline takes a process. But if, if we aren't building that road in 2020, I might lose my mind. And the public works department might lose their mind. The traffic is increasing on it. We can't, it has to be a priority. It needs to get improved, because from a maintenance perspective, we can't keep up with it, and the interim city manager loves driving it, so.
I would say, I would also say, kinda piggybacking on that, on a fast timeline, we're looking at maybe two phases instead of three. So, it's still a couple of years out, you know, including this year and next year to do that. So, I think there's probably enough time to be able to work through it and figure out exactly where that road is going, how it works in terms of our, of the alignment and the home sites that we have proposed on, on the south side along Marsh Lake Road. And we have designed those home sites and kept them in place based on the concepts that you've seen, the sketch plats that have been reviewed. We haven't really gotten too cute and creative with them, because it's a difficult area down there. I think in general, the whole site is kinda constrained. There's wetlands, there's woodlands, there's slopes. It's a tricky, it's a tricky spot to try to, and now we're kind of in the last portion of it of kind of a, you know, a 10-year build-out, whether that was the intention or not. So, I think I touched on the lot sizes. I'll cross that off. Circling back on the Poplar Place touchdown point, that was something that was kind of revisited, reworked, and reconfigured with city staff prior to us submitting this application. I believe that originally, Red Fox was gonna connect down, I think we showed it earlier, kind of that area. So, yeah, Red Fox was actually gonna come down and I believe come into where Poplar Place is. So, kinda tying back to the woodlands, that collector road was gonna go right through the middle of kind of that area as it was. And I understand that, you know, we, contrary to popular belief, we don't like cutting down a lot of trees either, because they're an amenity for a lot of people, including our home buyers. So, we want to try to keep as much as is possible. However, with the configuration of the collector road, some of the reconfiguration of the roads that we were looking at back in November and December, that was kind of the best situation to be able to, to put that road in and make sure that the connections to Marsh Lake Road that the city needed and that served the regional transportation area would be accommodated for, if that makes sense. So, there was some thought that went into it. Ben and I kicked it around a few times before he left, and then finally kinda got on the same page, and that's kinda what we, what we ended up running with. Let's see. I heard a lot of concern versus kind of the PUD versus the conventional zoning approach, and I think all the concerns are validated, and I'd be remiss if I said that we didn't have some of the same ones. As Kara had noted, you know, there was a, there was a rework of the zoning code. I actually remember when it took place a year or two ago, and I remember Ben actually made it a point to call me and say, hey, just so you know, we're looking at redoing some stuff. How is this going to affect you? And I remember thinking at the time, you know what, I don't think it's gonna be too bad, because most of our home sites conform to that size anyway. At the time, the villa market was kinda heating up, and I said, well, and he said, well, we wanna do these, because we're seeing a lot of villa product going in, but we're, we don't have a mechanism to try to, to implement it. So, what do you think of this? And I think he was reaching out to the development community as a whole. He just happened to call me up and say, hey, what do you think? And I remember looking at the initial cuts of the, of the ordinance, and I said, you know what, that pretty much fits our villa product to a T. So, that would be perfect, because now we don't have to deal with going through a PUD and the additional, you know, burden, if you will, that comes from both sides of going back and forth and not having a real clear-cut set of rules. The drawback that we're now finding is with the application of a conventional zoning district, there's not really that much flexibility. And if we do need flexibility to try to work around some amenities or try to, in this case, the one that comes to mind, the biggest, the biggest example is the buffer along Marsh Lake Road. By the time you have the grades that are coming up, and again, we did the grades based on existing line work that was available at the time, but by the time you have the grades coming up to the road, we need to be able to accommodate stormwater drainage there, so we have a, we have a couple of catch basins in the back. So we have a, we have a couple of catch basins in the backyards that go to a catch, or I'm sorry, okay, a couple of catch basins that catch the runoff and then go into the street and into the greater system, you'll see it on the utility plan. And then because of the grades, we needed a retaining wall. It's like almost impossible to get a 40-foot wide buffer back there because of all the other stuff that you need to accommodate, backyard drainage, the grade separation. And I think we had made room for a 25-foot buffer, as was planned a couple of years ago. Now, I understand the argument that, you know, that was two years ago and that this is now. But that's what we were trying to accomplish, and so I, I can see a little bit of the disconnect, and I don't know how quite, you know, how do we want to try to approach it, or same thing with the landscaping standards, too. I think there's a few sections of the code that kind of say the same thing, and when you end up applying them, it kind of, the amount of trees that you need kind of gets double-counted into the neighborhood. And I think at one point, upon my first review of the ordinance, I called Erin before she left, and I said, is this right? Because if, if what these numbers are, if, if what these numbers are truly what they are, we need like, we need like almost 4,500 inches in tree replacement. That comes out to like $1.2 million in trees. I was like, that can't be right. So we kind of reworked it, reworked it, and then I eventually sent her a tree analysis pretty much for the mitigation portion of it. And she said, you know what, I think, I think your interpretation is correct here. And then shortly, she was gone. So I can understand, and we're open to working with the city as we move through, but I think kind of like what Cara was saying, the commission, the council, the city is going to get one more look at everything through the final stage. So as we keep moving forward, I think we'll be able to work on the Marsh Lake Road issue. I think we'll be able to finalize the landscaping. We will be able to finalize the park dedication. Quick synopsis of that, back in 2015, I had done, I had run the numbers, I had worked on it with Ben, and at the time, we were like 2.2 acres short of what we had, what we were obligated to give. That was based on the Laketon original master plan of development that had been approved like back in 2004 or '05. The code hadn't been updated at that point, so as of 2015, I was like, you know, I'm getting, we're about two acres short. And as a part of the PUD, the thought was, okay, well, you know, there are residents that really struggle with access from one side of the community to another. Would you and our be willing to grade and build a trail through, I think it was Outlot S., first edition? Would you guys be willing to do that? And we said, well, yeah, if that'll satisfy our park requirement and helps you guys out with a trail connection, sure, we can make that happen. So I think we did that either this year or last. My understanding is at this point, the Parkland dedication for Laketon has been satisfied. And we are paying the, there's another ancillary fee, and I forgot what it's called. It was in the staff report from 2015, though I looked it up this afternoon.
The park facilities fee.
Right.
Which no longer exists in the current...
Correct.
Ordinance.
We, we decided to change the park ordinance in the middle of all of this, too.
So, so we can kind of see the running theme. We're kind of stuck in between two different codes here as we're finishing a community that was started under one premise and is trying to be finished under another, and there's a few gaps that we got to fill in. I can get that information over to Cara and over to the city so that we can finalize that. And then in terms of the tree removals, I kind of already touched on this, you know, there is no great way to try to make a connection to the south because the woodlands are kind of right in the middle of the site. So with the concept that we previously had, there was going to be a connection that was going to go kind of right through it, right there, right where Phase Two is, kind of, sort of. And there's a couple of roads in that area of the woodland anyway. So it was either come down on that side, or what Ben and I started kicking around was, was shifting everything a little bit over and having the connection made kind of more to the west. So to touch on, I'm sorry.
Laura.
Laura, to touch on Laura's point, again, as I was going through the code, there is a provision to allow a significant amount of removals, not that we wanted to. I asked my engineer, you know, can we, can we work this, can we leave these, can we try to get around this? But I believe that we are within the confines of the code when it comes to tree removals, and we are mitigating as the code prescribes us to mitigate. We did update and submit our landscaping plan, and we resubmitted that Friday. I don't know if Mark Kaltzus has had a chance to review it all the way through yet, but I did touch base with him briefly today. So I would anticipate more of that is coming. And again, we're going to have to submit a final landscape plan when we come back through for final plat. So if the major issues are, you know, the Marsh Lake Road and some of the landscaping stuff, and, you know, the engineering tied to Marsh Lake Road, I'm confident that we can work forward with, we can move forward with city staff and get those issues resolved prior to final design and even address them at final design. So if you have any other questions, I'm here. But again, I wanted to thank you for taking the time, listening to me go on and on about history, because there's a lot of it, but...
Well, I appreciate that overview. Did anybody else have any questions for Paul before?
I don't think so.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
So public hearing is, is open, so if anybody has any thoughts they'd like to share, we just ask that you, you step to the podium and state your name and address, and yeah, and please join us. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name's Peter Knabely. I'm a developer of the Meadows of Wasserman Lake, just west of this project. And we've been working with the Lennar team and in regards to the remnant parcel that we have that touches their project. And if you could change it to the phasing plan, just to give you an idea where this parcel is. It's just on the west end where the pointer is of the Timber Terrace Street. So we've got a recommendation to the Lennar group, just for a slight shift to the end of that road that would make the development of our piece, it would improve it for two reasons. One, there's a group of trees along the marsh, and if we shift that road to the south slightly, we'd be able to save a number of those trees when we do our next plating. And then the second reason is the Minnaeau Creek Watershed District has acquired a large easement along that buffer, and that just happened last year or the year before. So that, again, the shift to the south would keep that new road and those new homes out of that easement area. So again, prior to final plat, we expect to work with the Lennar group and, you know, kind of finalize that fine tuning. It's not going to change the number of lots on either side, it's just going to make it a better development for both. And then the only, second question I've got is in regards to the, or comment I have is in regards to the phasing plan, and I hadn't seen it before tonight. But I would recommend and will certainly work with the Lennar group in regards to the phasing for their Phase One, would recommend shifting or adding these seven lots as part of the Timber Terrace Street into their Phase One that would give our project more immediate access. And what that would do from the city's point of view is hopefully speed up that connection of the Collector Road, Red Fox down the Marsh Lake Road. And I think that would help the city in regards to this issue of the Poplar Place connection. If you've got the opportunity to get another connection on the west side and on the east side, I think that would help that situation, too. So those are the only two comments I've got. Thank you.
So just to clarify, so it sounds like you've already been in, in discussions with, with Lennar and working through this?
Yeah, so we'll make that, or hopefully make that shift prior to final plat.
Great.
And then the only other question is, is the timing of the phasing? We can certainly talk to them about that, too.
All right, thank you. Cara and Laura, just, so those two issues that you just described, do we consider those minor enough changes that that's reasonable to come before us for final plat, not affecting preliminary plat?
My understanding is that it was a slight shift in the roadway, not a major shift in the roadway, so...
Yeah, we're going to shift it probably about 50 feet, and the lot configuration is almost identical on our side.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm asking from an administrative standpoint of there, you know, if, if there's a threshold in which it becomes too substantial that it's not as simple as a, as a, as a final plat issue, is there something that we can recommend that they do?
I'm referring that to the planners.
Is it something that we can recommend they do to either avoid that issue, or does it affect our approval of the preliminary plat, is my main question?
As I understand it, these elements seem minor enough that they can be addressed at final plating, between preliminary plating and final plating. It is obviously within the benefit of the applicant to keep those elements minor, and I think that everyone can recognize that. If something happened where that configuration would either lose a lot or something would happen as far as the buildability of one or two or three of those lots, that, at that point, we might need to have a, a conversation about if that's considered a major or a minor. But as far as what we're talking about here, this seems the minor alignment of the road that, since that needs to be figured out with the final engineering construction plans anyway, that's appropriate.
If the, if the commission agreed with the intent of the, you know, future adjustments, would it be wise to attach a condition to the preliminary plat that acknowledged that ongoing negotiation between the developer and adjacent lots is, is recognized?
Yes, I think that...
And to be finalized for a final plat?
I think how you said that is, would be appropriate as a condition to recognize that these discussions are ongoing, and they should be taken into consideration with the final plat.
Because that seems, from an administrative standpoint, that it acknowledges that it's in progress, and when final plat comes before us, then collectively, we can deem whether it's considered minor or not.
Agreed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Julie Schmieg with the Schmieg Hilltop Farm at 5475 Marsh Lake Road, land that my family has farmed since it was homesteaded in 1853. And so I appreciate this opportunity tonight to provide comments regarding the preliminary plat. As Cara mentioned, we had an opportunity earlier this evening to meet with the development team, which was very helpful in providing feedback and some thoughtful insight into where this is headed, and it was also shared with you, and I would just like to share portions of it so that it's also recorded on the public record, too. So, so our family had some questions regarding the rollout of the approval process. To us, it seems premature and a bit imprudent to consider a preliminary plat when the tandem piece of the Marsh Lake Road Improvement Project has yet to be finalized. The development should not dictate the design of the road, especially a road that has been there for over 100 years. Rather, the road should drive the design of the development. When considering the proposed Poplar Place intersection at the top of the hill, from a farming perspective, our preferred location for any intersection is either to the east and/or west of the top of the hill. To have an intersection at the top of the hill raises concerns for our farm on several fronts. That driveway receives high usage as we are constantly taking large farm equipment such as tractors, baleys, wagons, and plows in and out of that driveway. These trips often involve left turns on and off of Marsh Lake Road. To have opposite oncoming traffic from Poplar Place complicates that intersection, making it more hazardous to navigate the wide turns needed for farm equipment. There are also challenging sightlines for left turns for cars across the hill, as the hill is so steep, it makes it difficult to see any oncoming traffic. Also, would an intersection at the top of the hill involve the incorporation of turn lanes, making the road wider at that point? And then does this then create a domino effect whereby the road would creep further onto our farm and impact the line of trees that create a sanctuary space for our parents' home? Also, car traffic exiting Poplar Place at the top of the hill will impact the tranquility of my parents' home. Headlights from cars coming off of Poplar Place will shine directly into their home along with the increased noise of turning traffic. Will the yet-to-be finalized road improvements for Marsh Lake Road include a bike trail corridor? And if so, what would be the placement of that? There is presently an open field on the north side of the road, so is there some consideration for perhaps shifting Marsh Lake Road to the north? We would appreciate if that option could be explored. So it's for these reasons that we would like to see the intersection moved away from the top of the hill. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question of Julie?
Absolutely, yeah.
Oh, me?
Yes.
Or us.
Yes, just being family, thank you for being here. A lot of the, this is a very big topic, which is fairly cool, but it sounds like you may control the answer to the problem. Has the family had conversations with the developer, working out a possible extension of that road to grant them access down there to eliminate the access to where it's being proposed today?
That has not been approached.
Landowners never approached, have they? No, they got landowners, landowners never approached, no.
Right, and this option was just kind of given to us today when we met earlier.
Would you be open to having a discussion with the developer to resolve that issue? You could maybe be able to work this out collectively to some sort of solution that works for everybody as a whole and not put that on us, which I'd rather not have it on us.
And part of it is for Mike. Right, Mike and Molly have the other side of it there, it's my side, and so there's kind of three players here with that option. And we have a large family. We're only two of, of seven siblings, so I mean, to involve them, too, in this discussion.
And be, if you could work on that collectively as a group, that would be outstanding.
And I think with that statement, I kind of brought that up in the first place, that we've had three years to discuss that a little bit, too. But like Cara said, sometimes looking ahead can be detrimental, too, but now is the time, and I think city should be involved as long with the developers to help facilitate that and organize it. I think it's a major, major deal, and Sue summarized exactly what I was trying to say, but more eloquently, so I appreciate that. But that was the whole point that I was trying to make also, that this is something that probably could be taken care of before the development gets to that phase. And I'd like to see that happen through these groups, trying to, with the city's help, to get these groups organized on this.
So based on everything I've heard tonight, though, that sounds like that is the proposal, that new information has been shared as recently as this week, and that the intent going forward, whether or not we approve the preliminary, recommend approval tonight, the intent is still that the city engages in conversations with landowners and the developer or facilitates those conversations. Is that what I was hearing earlier today?
Both from a road perspective and a sanitary sewer and water perspective. We do, the city has been approached by a landowner south of Marsh Lake Road that wants to start consider, considering the possibility of development. We would need to have utilities extended down there in order for them to be able to do that, so that conversation is ongoing as well.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm sensitive to your, your position, Todd, that, you know, maybe we could have had these conversations sooner, but I actually sort of feel like there's no better time than now.
Right.
Because there's, there's never been more clarity than there is right now, and the level of engagement going forward can, the sky's the limit, as long as there's communication, so.
Yeah, and I certainly would note that we just spoke with the Schmies today. I haven't ever had any conversations with the Simons. I can't speak to whether the planning department had ever had any conversations with them, but certainly we'd be talking to everybody.
I just feel we've been talking about Marsh Lake Road for over a couple of years now overall about the change of it, and the only one that really gets penalized by the development of this road is the, the original property owners on this whole side. They're the ones taking the rap for all this development, and I think we have to try to take care of them the best we can.
Thank you. Did anybody else have any thoughts they'd like to share?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Marcy Jorson. I live at 1575 Hackamore Drive, so I'm in the Lennar Development. I'm actually at Lot 10, which is going to be right next to the first phase. I have some concerns regarding the access for the construction being on Hackamore. Is there any other street that that construction, and maybe the developer could answer, that they'd be coming in on, or is Hackamore the one and only option for bringing in construction
Well, I, I think whether it's Cara or the developer that can offer insight on that, I'm not sure.
Typically, we don't start defining what the construction access routes are until we're developing the development agreement. So typically, what'll happen is city staff and the developer will take a look at the access opportunities and determine what's appropriate. They're never fun, whatever the answer ends up being in terms of having all that construction traffic come past your house. So I, I couldn't say now what I think the answer would be, but that's certainly something that gets considered as part of the final plat process.
Because I know it was brought up that that would be the only access earlier tonight?
Those are, so the street connections for the neighborhood are Red Fox, Red Oak, and Hackmore. So I think what Laura was referring to is that's how these homes would be accessed.
Okay.
Okay. Another thing I wanted to point out, too, the grading plan shows Hackamore with a 7% slope right towards that intersection of, looks like it's Field Drive, excuse me, which is a very steep slope, and if you've got construction vehicles coming down, wintertime, it's just, it's a red flag for me as a homeowner. Not, not only to mention the fact that there's going to be so many new, you know, families that are going to be coming in and out and up and down that Hackamore Drive, that it's, I just think it's something that should be looked at a little closer. The other question I had is, is the Vassar property, since my backyard is, is right up to the Vassar property, has there ever been a ghost plat done for that property? I, myself personally, one wasn't provided with this subdivision. I think I've laid eyes on one over the years, but I don't know, I don't know who or when or how it was prepared or provided. So that would have been the planning department who would have reviewed that. I don't know if the Planning Commission has ever seen anything related to that property.
Cara? I'm Jim Vassar.
Oh, hi.
I can-
Perfect.
Can I join her?
Come on up.
Absolutely.
Well, I was asked to bring in something for that land that I might do. I, I wouldn't worry about it, you know, I, I didn't have anything that I had any firm plans for, except that there will be a development there sometime. But I was asked to provide something, so I did the best I could, okay? My main concern here tonight, obviously, is the sewer situation. If I might stand over here a second. This goes out extended further this way. If you put the topographical back on here, I can easier show it. Whoa, there, that's it. I had talked with staff way back when this work was being done and prior to any building here, and I was told that the capacity for sewer on this line here was not sufficient to allow me to connect in and do any development here, that I would need to wait until the big line came in from the west. Fine with that, no problem whatsoever. It was indicated to me that that sewer access would be along this backside someplace, and it doesn't make any difference to me. It's going to have to come through the developer's property here, and his economics will tend to dictate that. You people need to really just be concerned that it's provided for, because obviously I need provision for sewer as well as water. So that's my concern tonight, and I'm kind of getting the feeling that we're not well enough along in the whole of the development process to know where that might be at this time. If we are, I would like to know. If not, I need to keep in touch with Cara here probably until that is brought up and so that I know about it at that time. Now, did I help with all the questions?
Yeah, that was, that was good service. So there is, there is sanitary sewer in the roadway that's abutting the Vassar property. What we'll want to look at is make, making sure we have a stub extended to the property line so that you could connect to it. You are correct that you needed the line from the other side of the lake before you could develop.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm fine with that. So I will keep in touch with you and stay abreast of it. Thank you very much.
Jim, if you wouldn't mind, before you sat, can you just state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Jim, I like, James Vassar. And I lived in Jaska for about 29 years there before we moved, but we presently reside in Montrose, Minnesota.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
I, I did have just one other comment. The house sizes, I noticed when we originally built the, in the eighth edition, it was called their landmark series. The pictures that were up today are much smaller of the houses, and it's similar to their discovery series. So it's a smaller home with a smaller footprint. But I just wanted to, to make that note, because they are smaller homes that they're going to be proposing, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to share any thoughts?
Hi there, I'm Jen Mulvahill. I live at 5720 Marsh Lake Road. So our house, out my kitchen window is the view of where this, you know, phase will be developed. And I just wanted to touch on the tree issue. I mean, it's a beautiful wooded property right now. There's a lot of wooded, mature trees there, and it is very concerning that so many trees would be taken down. And we all know what this neighborhood's going to look like. It's going to look like a lot of garages and trees about this wide on the streetscape. So, you know, the more that we can do to preserve what is already here, I mean, we did move to Victoria because it's a beautiful place to live, and we're the city of lakes and parks. We're not the city of, you know, garages and baby trees. So if we could preserve as much as possible of what is there, the natural beauty, that would be a good thing for everyone in our city. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening.
I am Scott Stenzland. I live at 5760 Marsh Lake Road. I just have a couple of comments. I appreciate everything Todd had said earlier, especially in respect to the Schmieg Farm. They've been there a long time, and we're just not doing them a service by not trying to move that road down. And in context of that road, it's, it's, it's just a little frightening to me to hear so many, "Well, work on that, yeah, we're going to try and figure that out," to put this through at this time. To me, it seems like we're just kicking the can down the road. You guys have a chance to make this right, make this the city of lakes and parks, and I hope to do so. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you all for your input. Discussion.
Laura, do you by chance have the bulk rigs, excuse me, for R1 available?
Oh, for R1, I do not have them in front of me, but I could pull up.
Cara's got it in her back pocket.
It's on even call, their ordinance. There you go. Minimum lot area, 12,000 square feet. Minimum lot width, 80.
Thank you, I did say, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Another question I have, Jeff, if we push this project along, and we know that this Marsh Lake thing is still kind of up in the air, what happens when what we see or we're speculating on today changes next year or the following year, and we've got this plat in place? How does that control the road alignment? How does that, how does it affect the city? How does it affect the commission? How does it affect the developer and the plat that may have been approved sometime in 2018? In 2020, well, the road doesn't like, exactly work that way.
Sorry, could you read?
If we approve the plat in 2018, we push the preliminary through, and it gets, the council gets platted out, and the county comes by and says, well, we know Marsh Lake, today we know Marsh Lake, as of recently, it's going to be two lanes versus four. The alignment could be plus or minus 20 feet. We get some land acquisition. What if that changes before it's done, and we've got this plat in place, and it affects eight, 10 lots on the south side of that development? Is there a liability issue that we have to be concerned about?
I don't know as far as liability. So I will say with preliminary plat, with the approval of a preliminary plat, it is a, it does give, it is a substantial land use approval, and so as long as a final plat meets the general, as long as the final plat meets what is within the preliminary plat generally, with the minor kind of changes that we were talking about tonight, then it, there is an obligation on the city's side to approve it. And so, but with how that impacts, if the county comes back and has issues on their design side, I'm not entirely sure. Cara, I'm-
There's an element of a little bit of a chicken and the egg. So when you look at, when you look at the other extreme side of the situation, decisions had to be made with all of these developments without knowing where the road was going to go. And to a certain extent, they become fixed points unless we want to acquire land, we, the city and the county, want to acquire land from existing platted lots, that, you know, in an extreme case, if you rerouted the road up here, you'd be buying houses to go through their property. So, you know, every step along the process, you end up with different fixed points that you're building up against. And from an engineering perspective, it really would have been nice to have this figured out in 2008, before we started working on this development down in this area. So it's not really an answer to your question, because I don't, I don't know what happens in that circumstance. From an engineering perspective, if there's, if there's a preliminary plat, but there aren't houses there yet, there's still an opportunity to work through those things versus if there's a final plat and there's lots and people living there, that becomes a much more restrictive design point.
Can you answer my question? Thank you.
I'm amazed.
John, to help me understand your question better, are you asking what the threshold of changes that would be allowed between preliminary plat and final plat?
The challenge I have right now is Phase One, Phase Two looks as contiguous and congruent with the rest of plan, but there's so many questions on Phase Three, and so many open ends on Phase Three, that I'm just not comfortable with that until we have more answers. And using Cara's term, adding more fixed points to a road that we don't know where the road's going to go, and it's been a road that's been in contention for quite some time. It's, I have a hard time saying, yep, let's run forward to this thing without having more answers to buffers and accesses and points, and where we're going to go with this stuff. Phase One and Phase Two just kind of, the development needs to grow, but Phase Three just tends to impact too many things with too many questions right now in my mind.
Yeah, I agree with you with Phase Three, there's just so many moving parts around that. It's easier to wrap my head around Phase One and Phase Two, and that just seems to be the sticking point.
You know, and in a, in a summary of what you just said, too, I mean, with our packet tonight, we got planning commission consideration points, and there's eight of them on there, and there's at least five that come to mind that are incomplete to me. And to move forward with this would be not right at this time, in my opinion. I couldn't recommend it with so many things open. You said maybe now the landscape plan has been approved, but we don't have that in front of us. The buffer situation with the width of the buffer and the height that they can't obtain, that's another issue. We need that to be compliant. I'd, I'd like to see more trees utilized, but within their right and with the way our code is written now, they, they obviously have figured it out, and that's, what they're doing is legal. Whether I like it or not, can't figure into my decision there, but I don't like it. I'd like to see more trees stayed, but within their right, they're okay there. The sewer issue, we still have open, that's not resolved yet. And the location of the road, as far as where it's the Poplar, what do they call that, Poplar Place? Poplar Place where that's coming out, that's unresolved.
Popular Point.
There's, Popular Point. There's too many things, you know, and then number seven is such an ambiguous statement there. The phasing plan is preliminary and subject to change based on market conditions at absorption rate of the homes. So what we're saying, three years from now, when those houses don't sell, we might want to put huge single-family lots or all townhomes in there, because that's what's going on in the market. So when we, when we allow projects to be put in in phases, sometimes we miss the market that we're representing at the time that we're asking for that phase to be developed. And that's kind of being shortsighted overall and not, not thinking ahead. Now, if they can prove that they can sell or have, you know, a, a market study that shows, yes, we can fill these three phases with this product at this time, okay, yeah, I can see that happening. But if they're telling me three years from the, down the road now, and I've been in construction and development for 35 years, that they're going to be able to sell every single one, one of these, and nothing's going to ask to be changed, they can't do that. It's impossible, and I don't expect them to do that. But then I don't expect a three-year, up to three-year, as stated by the developer himself, a, a phase that could be three years down the road, and the want and desire of that product still be available in the market. That, that's not realistic to me. So there's-
But to, but to deviate from that requires a replat.
Absolutely. So then we're right back where we were and, you know, redoing everything again, which, you know, why are we talking about the Phase Three? I guess the timeline is too, too spread out, is my point, to, if, if it's already been accepted once, you know, and it hasn't been developed, I mean-
So ideally, we'd be reviewing this with exclusive of Phase Three, but because we've got a review of the plat before us, which includes all three phases, that's what's creating the challenges.
That creates a challenge for me, I guess, in the longevity of it. I'm not opposed to what's here, let's put it that way, but I'm opposed to the timeline that's proposed for the phases. It was mentioned, not in writing. But there's other things here that I just, I'm, I don't feel completely satisfied with what was presented to me tonight.
So with regard to some of the challenges, I think you, you touched on several, I mean, you mentioned the sewer, you mentioned the intersection, you mentioned the tree replacement plan, landscaping plan. Some of the other things that you, the buffer-
Yep, the buffer, the berming, yep, buffer, yep. And I know these things that could, could be worked out, but they're not worked out here in front of me. It's hard for me to push forward. And I'm not trying to push my thoughts on anyone else, obviously, but that, you know, to have my opinion out there, I think is, is why I'm here.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think, I think I echo some of your concerns. I'm, I'm trying to reconcile, I mean, I'm sensitive that there are some things in the works. I'm sensitive to where the city is at in a point of transition. Trying to not let that influence my decision-making, at least in terms of what, what in the, in the long term, what's the best interest of the city, right? Because I think that if we make the wrong decision and push things forward prematurely, we'll all ask ourselves years from now, why, why did we do that? So on, on the one hand, there's a, there's a fair amount of trust that I'm, I'm placing in city staff in terms of what we do consider minor, and what, what is administrative and what could be, what can be worked out. And so I'm thinking about if we, what are the advantages to tabling or not, not recommending approval at this time? Because what it sounds like for some of these things, it's not a matter of weeks to, to sort out. It's actually, it's a significant amount of time that's relying on the strategy that the Phase Three wouldn't come, come- that the Phase Three wouldn't come, come back until, until these things have been worked out with other agencies, with, with the county for the road and those types of things.
Yeah, that's correct. The items related to number three, so the buffer, the sewer depth, and the Poplar Place connection are months away at the soonest of being resolved. I, you know, certainly if they were in for final plat, I wouldn't be recommending approval of the final plat for Phase Three, given where we're at with the conditions. If, if Paul turned around next week and submitted engineering drawings for Phase One, Two, and Three, engineering would not be recommending approval of final plat, given where we're at with the road.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question of Paul? The developer? Is it, are we outside of that window?
Yeah. Yeah, I think you can ask a question. That's fine.
When are you guys planning on moving dirt on Phase One?
The, this spring is when we would plan to move dirt on Phase One.
If we asked you to come back in four weeks at our next meeting with a new proposal of Phase One and Phase Two, with some agreeance with the neighboring developer, would that be something that might work for you and your group? And moving Phase Three at this time, because I don't think we're all going to come to an agreement on that anytime soon.
We could look into that. I mean, so you're saying we would essentially change our proposal from Phase One, Two, Three to a pre-plat for Phases One and Two?
I'm just, it's just me as an individual, the group obviously has to agree with that. I'm just, there's a lot of questions in the air right now with Phase Three that none, none of us can answer. The issue with the neighboring developer, we should probably figure out that alignment. Fifty feet might sign, might sound minor, but that's 50% of a lot, as far as depth. So that seems more major than minor in my head. So if we could maybe come back in 30 days, whenever we have our next meeting with One and Two, with that agreement with the neighboring parcel, that might make it easier, at least for myself to process and might take some of these questions off the table that none of us can really answer at this point. And I'm just speaking for myself and not the group, so that, just a thought that I've got out there.
Yeah, I think to be fair, we're not putting Paul on the spot tonight to necessarily answer whether or not he, he would agree to that. But I think that it's reasonable for us to, as a commission, share where our thoughts are, having heard all the input from those that are, that are here tonight and also with our discussion. And I think that Paul and his team can make a business, a business decision. I think that we have to decide tonight how, how we intend to act. Because I think our, our options are to recommend approval, to not recommend approval. You know, those are based on vote, but we could also table the discussion. And by tabling the discussion, I think it would create the opportunity for all those involved to reevaluate the approach and we continue the discussion at a, at a future planning commission meeting.
So I can see if, you know, what our managers would think about basically scrapping Phase Three for this preliminary plat at this time. I can't make an answer, or I can't give you an answer on the spot.
We wouldn't expect you to.
But we can, we can look at that. The other thing that I would offer too is, is it worth, and I don't know what the experience of the city is, is it worth adding a condition of approval that has a timing trigger? Such as prior to final plat, this, this, and this for Phase Three shall be, you know, figured out. And I know, I know that's the, that's a concern, but it happens a lot. And given the fact that Phase Three is at least a year, two years, three years down the line, I would think that, given the information that we got for Marsh Lake, we'd be able to have a meeting with, with the Schmiggs, I believe, and kind of work through that. I mean, that's, that's a good amount of time to try to figure that out. And then if we don't, then it's, it's kind of on us, right? If we want to, I don't know if that's, if that's something that would be entertained. Maybe the easier thing to do would be to take out the third phase, but then we're right back here trying to get the third phase for, you know.
And while that seems.
Ten, fifteen.
I'll add that while that seems like a disadvantage, I think that for the same reason that you state that there's lots of time between now and the point that you would come forward with Phase Three, it seems like chances of approval increase with more information and, and some of these items being sorted out, which I'm, I'm hearing are considered to be significant when the list of things is, is quite long, specific to Phase Three. My, my general sense is that if we're trying to balance keeping things moving forward, I don't know that anybody necessarily wins if we're, if we recommend against approval. By tabling the discussion, I think it would allow, again, this is for the, the group to decide collectively, but I think that if the, if the discussion is tabled, it allows for your group to strategize about how to bring it forward, a plan that can move forward. And I think also allow more time for more detail to be developed. And if, if enough detail can't be developed in such time that Phase Three can be included in our next discussion, whether it's two or four weeks out, then it may be a wise choice to pull Phase Three out of this preliminary plat in the interest of allowing Phases One and Two to move forward in a timely fashion.
When's the next commission meeting?
So the next commission meeting is April 19th. The first commission meeting of April is, has been canceled. So it will be April 19th, which is.
I think it's the 17th, sorry, 17th, excuse me.
So in, in a comment to that is the other portion of it being short-staffed. It puts a lot of pressure on staff to figure all these little elements out too. They're short-staffed to begin with. Not that that's your fault, but it is a problem for all of us. And if, if we don't table it, I'm looking at the timeline too because we don't meet again for a month and then ask to go to council for preliminary and then back for a final and a final to council. So no matter what, ground isn't going to be broken till end of May. So you're in summer, you're June 1st at the earliest timeline-wise, no matter which way we go. And if we can table it and have that time in between, if things can be worked out and it comes back to us with those questions answered, I think we're a little farther ahead in the long run. If that's what you were getting at, Commissioner, as far as the tabling goes.
I agree with you, Todd. I'd rather table it than deny it. At this point, I'd have to deny it based upon the information, the questions that are still out there.
I think it's a good project overall, obviously, and this is how we want to develop because that's what's been going on and there's the demand. We don't want to deny any developers who have good projects, but I think the questions need to be answered.
I think my feeling's in line with the group too, that the changes could be too significant for a final plat, more appropriate for a preliminary plat. And by tabling it, I think probably be the development team's best option too. Or also, like Jeff had mentioned, maybe just coming back with the Phase One and Phase Two. If the Phase Three stuff isn't resolved, to keep the project at least moving along.
Would the, just as I'm thinking about this, would the commission or the city, I guess, have, and maybe you can't give me an answer to this, speaking of questions we can't answer tonight. But if we reconfigured the phasing to incorporate everything but those, say, eight, 10 lots along, those eight to 10 home sites along Marsh Lake Road, if we had to drop Phase Three, could we just shrink Phase Three altogether and then still max, basically maximize Phases One and Two? Is that something that could be entertained? Because I think the ones on the north side of that, of that street, the home sites on the north side are pretty much okay. It's Marsh Lake that's kind of the unknown, right? In terms of the touchdown point, the sewer and how it affects those eight, eight home sites on the south side there. To the, just directly north of Marsh Lake, I guess.
I, I think you're on the right track because the specific issues that I'm tracking here is, it is the sewer. It's the right-of-way width of Marsh Lake Road. It's the intersecting road at Marsh Lake Road. It's the buffer. And I'll just add, I, I, I feel like the commission is likely leaning towards holding firm on the buffer, or at least within reason, that I think the buffer has, has value, both the landscaping associated with the buffer and the, and the buffer itself. So I think that that, there wants to be more discussion around that.
How much of Phase Three, excuse me, can be developed before you have to punch a road through to Marsh Lake Road? Can you just develop the north side of the stuff of Phase Three, but not the south side?
I, the, aside from the whole needing multiple access points from an engineering perspective, I think eliminating the connection to Marsh Lake Road would give your engineer an opportunity to look at those, that roadway design and either lift the grade up or down to minimize your retaining wall needs. So from an engineering perspective, I would not prefer to see Phase Three shrunk because it, it's such a short distance from Marsh Lake Road to that Poplar Place, Catkill Court intersection that if you can change those grades to make them better, I wouldn't want to lose that opportunity by having part of the road all the way in. Certainly, I mean, if it gets tabled, that's something your engineer could review and convince me otherwise, but.
But it sounds like, okay, that's, thank you. But it sounds like in terms of the buffer along Marsh Lake Road, the city's going to hold firm to that? Even if it's a requirement that was kind of imposed before this came in or kind of, in mid. Here's my concern, where I'm, where can I, I can already see this going because I'm already thinking about stuff, is if the expansion of Marsh Lake Road is getting pushed to the north, the way that it is, and once we figure out what the alignment is and, you know, we got to lay all that in there, if it's getting pushed more to the north and you have to have a 40-foot, you know, buffer on top of that, I don't know what that leaves us with our, in terms of a backyard.
And just, Jackson, Paul, all due respect, I don't think we can answer that. I don't think any of us can live in a world of what-if because we just don't know. And that's where my head's at. Until we know, have the real facts, we could talk about the what-ifs and maybe possibilities that, we can't answer that question until we know what the county's going to do. And that's out of our control, to my understanding. So until we have more facts, I'd like to see you guys keep going. You've been a great job. You've always been great to work with. Again, it's your project. We're just trying to help you along with it. I don't know if I'm supposed to do that. But by tabling it, it might give you some time to talk to the Schmieck family and figure out the other access point. It might give your engineer a chance to revisit the grades to help us meet some sort of buffer design concept. It'll give you a chance to speak with the neighboring developer and figure out that minor 50 plus or minus road alignment that we might be missing on today. I just, if I had, if this got shut down right now and called the vote, I'm going to deny it unless we table it. Just because there's too many what-ifs out there.
So the point I was trying to make earlier with the, with the berm is that if we had all that information that you referred, I mean, if we knew the right-of-way, we knew the constraints, we knew, we knew the goals, I, I believe that this, as a group, we probably would have a more rigorous discussion around the berm, the, the intent around that and, and the screening and, and what that means. And so we haven't talked about it a lot tonight because we've had other things that are actually more pressing before we can even really talk about that. So I, I feel like understanding what the intent of that, of that setback and the berming and the landscaping that goes along with it, even if we find that based on the right-of-way and the space that you have allowed, I just think there needs to be more rigorous design and discussion around how, how do you meet the intent of that provision, what, you know, which is providing this, the visual screening, the headlights screening, the acoustic screening. You know, it's thinking about view corridors through our city, but also for those and, those residents on the other side. You know, there's a whole, those are the goals and aspirations that come with that requirement. And so you may prove to us in a future submission that you can't meet it to the letter, to the letter of the law, but I, I think that it would be well received if the, the intent was, was being met. And perhaps there's some creativity around the intent. I mean, there, you're right, that it's a code that didn't exist for you when this develop, when the rest of your development started years ago, but it is a code that exists today. And we have been holding others to it and there's, I think, goals and aspirations associated with that requirement. Is that fair?
Sure.
Does it take away?
That's fair. Thank you.
And also just sharing some other feedback, I think that, I mean, if, if we were in a position of recommending going forward, there's some other things that came up tonight, such as the, I would probably recommend for the group to talk about, a condition would want to be added to the approval for the ongoing negotiations with, with the property or the developers to, to the west. Just, we talked about that would be a good place to add it. And whether or not there was time to incorporate those kinds of changes are kind of up to you. There was another one. Oh, the, the tree replacement plan, sounds like that's probably in, in transit, but it's not before us tonight. So the assumption is that any, any future review of whether it's just Phases One and Two or all of it again in the future, that that would be incorporated? That, that's all that's coming to mind. I don't know if anybody else is thinking something else. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, so, how to move forward. I'm kind of getting the sense, I mean, do we all agree that enough information is lacking tonight that we likely can't recommend approval as, as presented? And so therefore, is the, is the best course of action in the interest of both the applicant as well as the city to not delay things further to actually table this discussion and allow for feedback to be digested and considered? And we can pick up where we left off at a future planning commission meeting? For the benefit of the group, I'm saying that out loud, but I don't want to speak for anybody. So is, do others agree that that's the right?
I agree.
I would tend to agree with that.
Yep, I would agree.
Okay. I also think that there was some good feedback from, from the residents tonight. And I think it's, the good news is it's on the record. Everybody involved has heard it. I don't know that we necessarily, our role as a planning commission is to, to respond and answer all of them. I think in the past, what I've observed is that, you know, things, comments about safety and construction phasing, those are the types, that's the type of feedback that city staff, as well as the city engineer hears and it's on record and, and it factors into ongoing conversations as this process moves forward, both with the developers' agreement as well as other provisions to manage the process. But it's a little beyond what we're doing here as a planning commission, as a, as a body in terms of whether we're approving or denying. Is that a fair statement, Cara, that?
Yes.
I think it's, should be noted though, the fact is that since we have heard that, it's our job to project it to the council, that that was a part of the subject and condition of why we decided to do what we did. So they fully understand that there is that safety concern in case they don't have the chance to hear what we heard tonight.
Yeah. And so the safety concern, you're absolutely right, that with regard to, to Marsh Lake Road, the safety concern I was referring to is to the, the construction phasing and the grade up at the, at the development to, to the east. That, that was, I guess it was Marcy and some others that, that shared those concerns, which I thought was, was good concern for, for us to factor in. But some of that will come in with your ongoing. Construction agreement and, and how that process is managed and.
Yep, absolutely. I think we've had that discussion before with traffic and more policing and stop signs and, you know, contacting the contractors themselves. So, yeah, it's good that's always brought up though.
It's helpful to have it early in the process like this so we can consider those things as we're going through our reviews, so.
Yeah. So I'm expressing appreciation for the feedback because it's factored in, although it's not something that we're acting on as a commission at this time. Okay, so I think this still needs a motion, right? So I guess what I'll do is I will, I will make a motion to table this discussion or further discussion at a future planning commission meeting, what, at this time is scheduled for April 19th, 2018?
April 17th is a Tuesday meeting. I apologize for earlier.
So is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, hearing none, we'll, we'll continue the discussion at a future date. And thank you all for, for your feedback. Okay, so we do have some other business to get to this evening. I know that some of you might want to connect and talk. I just might ask that you, um, make your way to the lobby and, um, and we'll continue with our, with our business here. Okay, so the next item on our agenda this evening is council meeting updates. So for, for Laura's benefit, um, this is just an opportunity. We typically, we have a schedule that each of us are scheduled, one of us is to attend each of the city council meetings, either attended or viewed and, and report to the group any items relevant for the planning commission. At times, we may not attend, and those from city staff who were there, if there's anything that they'd like to share, it's a good opportunity just to keep us up to date with what's going on. So first I'll ask if anybody from the planning commission, it's been a while since we've met. And so, I don't know if there's been some attendees at council meetings that want to share an update?
I haven't been since end of last year or so.
And nor have I.
But my turn's coming up.
Yeah, is there a schedule out there somewhere?
Yeah.
I need to re, relook at the schedule.
Find that. If anybody has a copy of that, I'd love to see it, because I know I've, I've probably seen it and ignored it, and I've got my calendar.
So I might actually take this opportunity to ask because, um, there are some openings.
Yes.
For, for the commission, right? And so typically, we've, soon after those appointments have been made, a new schedule for the year has been created and then shared with the group.
Okay.
So maybe before sharing a, a schedule as it stands, maybe we let those appointments, um, take place. And I'm not sure what the timing of that is. It feels like it's coming up here soon.
Mr. Chairman, they're interviewing planning commission members Monday night.
Okay.
And I think the appointment will be Monday night. Actually, yeah.
Yeah.
And you have, I think, about seven applicants, seven or eight applicants for it, so...
Or two seats, as it stands, right? Okay, so maybe I'll add that, ask that you add that as a to-do item, that once appointments are made, that we revisit that schedule for the year and distribute to the group.
Can do that.
Thank you.
Um, if there aren't any other council meeting updates, we'll move on to the next item, which is miscellaneous. Does anybody have anything under miscellaneous?
I have a couple of things, of course. Uh, one thing is, uh, in the past, we have had two meetings a month for the planning commission, and our packets, uh, we were informed that we have the information available through an email, um, from city staff. But it was always Friday at three-thirty in the afternoon. Meetings are on Tuesday. I'm a person that isn't around on the weekends. I enjoy the outdoors. I come back Monday, work Mon, I got one day to analyze some of the stuff. And if, now that we're going to have them just one month, if there could be a five-day to seven-day lead time, that would be extremely helpful. I really scrambled to get this one crammed in. I slept about three hours last night, so, for a volunteer position. But I'm interested in it, and if I have more time to digress it, I mean, I think it, to digest it, I think everyone else would benefit from that. What else was it going to say?
Well, I, um, I thought that was a good comment, Todd, but I thought in the, what even made it more, um, relevant is in the context if we were to begin meeting less frequently. The, the assumption could be that our agendas might grow if we're only meeting once a month. And if, if that proves to be the case, especially once we get here in the spring season and summer, I think Todd's point becomes even more important that, um, it will be a challenge for, I think, all of us, if our agendas grow, to be fully vested and spend the time necessary with it without a little bit more lead time. And perhaps that actually works if, if there's a month between meetings that... I know in the past, it's been a challenge for city staff to balance having the time to prepare the packets so that they're complete and meaningful for us, but then get them to us soon enough that we have time to, to spend with it. So I've, I've always been sensitive with that balance, but I think it becomes even more critical with, with meeting less and agendas being more intense.
Especially since we know we have a tree ordinance we had to resurrect.
So I think kind of all of that, um, I think one element with moving forward, because of Mark's schedule, he is not able to attend regularly-scheduled planning commission meetings. Um, he has a commitment with a few other cities, I believe, on Tuesday evenings. Um, and so that's why he wasn't here tonight, to present his, uh, the, for Laketown. Our sort of piecemeal approach at this point, and feel free to weigh in on this if this doesn't work, we did send out a, a doodle to see if other days of the month might work better. It was pretty much split down the middle that, that doesn't work. So, um, we are, as of right now, kind of just looking ahead at what, month to month, what is coming up. For April, we know now we have Laketown eleventh, um, to readdress. We have the comprehensive plan, um, walkthrough. And, uh, we will also have a CUP for an additional dwelling unit on a property. Those are the applications so far. There might also be a CUP amendment, um, on that agenda as well. With that in mind, that's a pretty heavy, um, agenda. Not un, not unapproachable. It just means that, um, we would have to maybe, um, include a little bit more within our, uh, planning reports and have more just overview during the discussion. I think this was, this evening's report, as well as when it was submitted to you all, well, when it was put up onto Granicus. And I apologize that there wasn't an additional email letting you know that it was, um... It was sort of a scramble of working with the most recent Laketown, um, which we had gotten midweek last week? So, uh, all of those elements coming together, plus Mark and myself only being in the office twice a week maximum, um, and Kara obviously helping us out wherever she can. So I think going forward, that, uh, feedback is helpful to know. And, um, especially as we're building our, uh, agendas almost a month in advance, we can hopefully get those elements completed within a packet with a little bit more wiggle room because they probably will be, uh, larger. So I want to give you guys as much time to work through them.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we'll, we'll do everything we can. We're very lucky, actually, to get Mark and Laura, Mark in particular, who knows so much about Victoria because he worked here for four years. So I was excited to be able to find those two people. She's been working in the comp plan area, right? So we're, we're lucky to got what we got. We'll, we'll do the best we can and get to... I, I appreciate your concern and getting it to you. We'll do what we can. And I, and I, I know that they're going to work with us. Mark is, I think, very capable of getting good stuff to you, and we'll do, we'll do some good stuff.
Yeah, I'll make the comment. I appreciated the amount of information in the packet because it was full. Everything was there. I didn't have to call and ask for this or that. It was a very well-put-together, uh, presentation, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I'll just add that, um, well, I, I can speak for myself, but I'm hoping that I'm speaking for others, that recognizing the transition, hopefully that our communication doesn't sound like complaining.
No.
But more so just recognizing the value of communication and just being open. If anything, just so that expectations can align. Not that we're, we're frustrated, but you wouldn't know what city staff had done in the past unless we sort of shared that with you and, and how, how helpful that is. I happened to get an email from the city, only, it must be because I'm subscribed to Other Alert, so I got a notice that the planning commission packet was available and ready. But I didn't even internalize that, well, typically, I get that from city staff. And so, um, you know, if others didn't get that notice, um, from city staff, that, that, that's why we're sharing with you, is that that's actually a good touch point because it's, it's different from the standard city notification that I'm sure, it sounds like not all of us subscribe to, so...
The other thing that we talked about, too, was if, if we suddenly start getting a bunch of Platts in, we don't have any coming in yet that we know about. But if suddenly that were to change, we felt we would all regroup. And if we needed to add another meeting or do it on another night, we certainly would discuss that. And Doug would bring that to you, as opposed to just slamming you with a seven-hour meeting or something because of that situation. But right now, it, of all the times to be going through the transition, I feel lucky that we, you know, it wasn't a year ago where we had how many Platts at different stages of the process. I'm, I'm happy to not have that at the moment. But Doug's going to get the positions filled fast, so...
No, we, we've hired a consultant to help us find, and, uh, we, we should be interviewing in, in May for the position in Phillips, so...
Yeah, sounds good. I'll add one miscellaneous item, only because as we're talking and we're talking about schedules, I just happened to notice that, uh, April seventeenth, I am out of town, traveling for business and unable to adjust that. So I wouldn't be here for that continued discussion and that meeting on the seventeenth. Which I'm certain that you all could carry on without me.
So, uh, with that being said, there's two other concerns then, is the other reason for the email that went out was they always asked to see if you were going to be present for that meeting, so we had a quorum. That was another feedback thing. And also, we don't have a vice chair as of right now. Tom Crakey's was the vice chair. So I think tonight, that's part of some business I think we need to take care of, as elect the vice chair at this time.
And I'll be back April seventeenth if reappointed. My seat's open.
Ah, yes.
I go to council, uh, for an interview, a group interview on Monday.
On Monday, okay.
Okay.
So, the, elect the vice chair, we would have to have a nomination. How do we handle that? How do we proceed with electing a vice chair at this time for, someone has to run the meeting if he's, if the chair is not here.
Yeah, I mean, if you could elect a vice chairman tonight, that'd be super.
Yeah, we, um, in the past, we've done that by, um, nomination and then, um, a second to that as, as a motion. I think we could deal with that under, under miscellaneous.
Yes.
I nominate Todd Treatheart as vice chair of the planning commission for twenty eighteen.
I will second that.
I'll third that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want a discussion?
I just knew it was coming.
So I should ask, Todd, do you, do you accept?
I accept.
All right, so...
I didn't get an option.
Hearing, uh, no nays, I guess Todd is our, our vice chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think that's good. Is there anything else that we should cover under miscellaneous?
One quick thing, as a Victoria Lion member for many years, there's, uh, like, Victoria Lions Fish Friday night at the church on top of the hill, the same Victoria Church. And I welcome you all to come on up, support the Lions.
Uh, one item moving forward, and, um, this is kind of for the benefit of me slash, so that we can have this on the record for moving forward with whoever our next community development director and, uh, city planner are. There have been a lot of items, uh, ordinances, uh, things of that nature that the planning commission is at different phases of, um, moving forward with. I want some of your input on which ones you believe are the priority to focus on? If there's anything that needs to be moving forward during this time of transition versus things that can, um, sort of wait? I know the ones off the top of my head that have been mentioned, obviously, the chicken ordinance is pretty close to being done, from my understanding. I honestly haven't looked at it at all. In my mind, maybe not the highest priority, but that, it really depends on where you guys are. The shoreline ordinance, obviously, um, our team over at HKGI is working on some elements with that, but, um, looking for some direction on what direct, where we need to be, where we need to be and when with that. The, uh, tree preservation, revisiting that element, obviously that hasn't started yet, but that's one that's been noted, as well as this, uh, parking policy for, um, the twenty-eight-foot roads. And how to approach that for existing developments and then future developments. I don't know if there have been any others that, uh, have come up, but I just want to check.
The parking ordinance in general.
Oh, yes.
Is going to be revisited.
I would suggest we close the open items and don't start any new ones until we have permanent staff in place.
Yeah, I'd, I'd agree, agree with that. And, um, I think, I'd suggest that we add this as a agenda item at a, at a future planning commission meeting to, to come with that list. I've, I've seen a, a tracking list like this in the past that is, that has listed them, those that have gone before council, those that are still pending, those that are still on the list of to-do. So, um, I'm not sure how, how city staff works, if you might be able to find that as a baseline. But I think, bringing that before this group to talk. But I do think that we should also talk about even those that are in process, whether, whether or not it makes sense to move them forward before, um, uh, before we get beyond the interim staffing condition. Just because in, at least in my experience and those of us who have been around long enough, that it seems like whoever the, there is influence that comes from the planning, uh, development director in terms of philosophy and approach. And there's been instances where we've gone one direction and very quickly thought differently about that.
Yes.
And, um, just because fresh perspective or, um, thinking about how administratively, um, city staff at that time works, there's just reason to sort of factor that, that in and have a long-term view on things.
Then I will propose, given that, propose, uh, we discuss that at possibly a May meeting, that list of ordinances. Hopefully, by the June meeting, we might have someone already coming in, so, or July. So, uh, what I'm trying to say is, you know, from my perspective, do we need to have chicken ordinance on the April agenda? Is kind of where I'm trying to get it. We already have a pretty...
I think it, it was so close when we left it last time, uh, that there, it would be an easy one to get through fast.
Okay.
What was left, because we probably had a consensus about everybody, with among everybody, that we knew what we wanted in place. There was one discussion point I wanted to bring back up to it that, uh, I might have misheard or we didn't completely finish. But other than that, I think that'd be a quick one to get on the books.
Okay.
It is appropriate since it's Easter. I mean, it...
Yeah, they're real. That's a bunny.
Not, not pressing, but perhaps an easy one to, to move forward and, and put behind us. But also, I think that we can strategize in any time. You know, whether it's April or May, I think still strat, having a strategy in place about what the priority is and, and how to attack them. In some ways, that actually might help with continuity because there's already things that I'm hearing you talk about tonight that have come up recently, that to sort of set that whole topic aside completely for several months until there's new staff, that we might miss an opportunity to sort of, you know, pass things along from a continuity standpoint. And so I think that we can come up with a strategy without have, have, being compelled to rush to act on some of those things, but just sort of have them in the queue and, and schedule.
Okay.
Anything else miscellaneous? All right, Laura, you survived your first one.
And Kara.
Kara, Kara as well, thank you. Your, your participation's appreciated.
And Doug.
Yes.
Yes.
I make the motion to adjourn.
You may have seen me too often, but...
Yeah.
I'm trying to do this part-time.
I understand. Um, okay, so with that, I will make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Enjoy your evenings.
Thank you.